Let the record reflect, we reconvene with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation, under God, is invincible for the liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion for the reorganization meeting minutes of January 5th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Executive minutes of January 13th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
This has already been discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of January 13th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all, apologize for the delay. We had a little bit longer than normal agenda for executive and then logistics as we came back in here, but we're here, ready to go. So, thank you all for coming out tonight. Couple of things that happened over the last couple of weeks. On Sunday, January 19th, I attended a Martin Luther King Jr. beloved community service at Holy Family Chapel, St. Elizabeth's Campus. Service was sponsored by the Interfaith Council, organized by Pastor Craig Dunn of the First Baptist Church. Included interpretations of Dr. King's work by clergy from many of Madison and Florham Park churches. It was a very inspirational thing and we do need to get the word out. It's been, I think, a five-year tradition, but not known by too many, so we'll make sure people find out about that next year. And then, last week on Wednesday, January 22nd, we had the informational hearing on the Central Avenue subdivision. This was part of the agreement on the sale of the Green Village Road School for redevelopment. This Borough of Madison and the Board of Education are in the process of the land transfer. The land is a half acre in the corner of the school property on Community Place, adjacent to the current affordable housing. And a detailed copy of the presentation is available on Rosenet. In fact, if you just go to our beautiful new Rosenet site, you'll see it right up front in center, you can click on it and see it. Just a couple of things on agenda-wise. I'll mention this again, but there will be a discussion on the plastic bag ordinance. There was a, it was listed for a revision, a minor revision to the plastic bag ordinance. It was not quite ready, we'll explain that shortly, so that ordinance will not be introduced tonight, but the ordinance is still, will be going in effect in March. And at this point, I'm gonna come down below. So you can imagine that in a typical day, going through my email, that some email is maybe full of suggestions, it might be a nice way to put it, and other things. So it is always so, so special to get an email that Yana sent, and I'm gonna read the email, and then she's gonna read a poem that she wrote. And this was addressed to, Dear Mayor Connolly, Ms. Byrne, and Ms. Erlich, congratulations on your inauguration. This was the first inauguration of any kind I have attended. I was surprised and delighted on how moving I found it to be. I feel very fortunate to live in Madison. I have long known that this town is a real community, not just a place where I pay taxes and get a set of services in return. But the inauguration made me reflect on the specific building blocks and what makes a place a community, and how these blocks are embodied within Madison. It was wonderful to see how history was remembered and honored through the inclusion of veterans in the proceedings, the singing of patriotic songs, the remembrance of a cherished residence who had passed away, the recognition given to Connie Stober for admirable service, record of service, and blazing a path as the first female elected official in our town. It was great to see the Madison Police Honor Guard, to acknowledge the importance of the service that the police officers perform. It was wonderful to observe you being sworn in, to hear the oath of office, to see that some of you placed your hands on the Christian Bible, and some on the Torah, but all of you took the same obligations. This moment of matter-of-fact acceptance and equality was especially moving to me. I had come to the U.S. as a refugee from the Soviet Union 41 years ago. On your inauguration day, I arrived at Hartley Dodge Building directly from the anti-Semitism march that was held on Sunday. And as I listened to the list of committee assignments being distributed among the council members, I was awestruck by how much work and how much responsibility each of you and all other council members are taking on. I am deeply, deeply grateful to you and your families. I wish you good health, success, and joy in your service to the community. And below is my take on what makes Madison number one. And her poem followed, and when I share this, it was obviously, you touched our hearts, so thank you so much.
So, thank you very much. I was very surprised and honored to be invited, and I still, even after 41 years, I'm still feel so moved, and so, in some strange way, still surprised and very grateful for seeing that in this country, people really, at all levels, as individuals, as families, as towns, really do decide their own fate. I mean, within some constraints and so on. And this is something we should not lose, and I'm very grateful, because I think it takes a lot of work. It's a lot easier for people to be passive and just hand over responsibility for their lives to whoever happens to take it. And I'm very grateful to be in a country where that is not how it's done. So, anyway, so I wrote this poem, it's called "Hometown." This is my hometown. Suburban New Jersey, a small town, home. A delightful place if you know how to delight in the shade of majestic old beach trees. The glistening colors, the rainbow flavors of the tomatoes, eggplants, and apples, filling the bins of the farmer's market each Thursday. In the September ritual, broods of wide-eyed freshmen from a nearby campus led along main streets by the maven's, the resident advisors, who point out the town attractions. The ice cream shop, great milkshakes, the train station, get to New York City in under an hour. Suburban New Jersey, a small town, home. An enchanting place if you are willing to be enchanted by a secret sorcerer, an anonymous artist, who casts a spell over plain small stones, paints them with bright colors, adorns them with glitter, flowers, sweet sayings, leaves them half-hidden, nestled in the grass, cradled by the tree roots. Come, let us walk together. Let us keep our eyes open, ready to make acquaintance of these stone changelings. Let us give thanks for the quiet magic that makes them possible. And I will just add that it really is true, I really do find such stones all over the town, and if somebody knows who the artist is, please tell them that it is a delight. And I do think that it is, because it's such a beautiful and safe and well-run town, that we feel safe, you know, communicating through art like this. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and I just want to make note, in case you notice some different faces up front here, Liz Osborne is home with the flu, and so Kathy Notain has stepped forward and is ably covering for her, so thank you, Kathy. And now on to reports from committees. Finance Borough Clerk, Council President Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Tax Department, good news. There's a reminder that the first quarter property taxes are due February 1st, which is coming up real fast. From Accounts Payable Department, the Edmunds Budget and Accounts Payable System was successfully rolled over and opened 10 days ago. The bill list that we will vote on at the end of the meeting reflects all the good work that the Purchasing and Accounting Payable Department does. Special thanks goes to Linda, Kevin, and Stacy for all their hard work. This evening, we're gonna continue to talk about our work on the 2020 budget. The last council meeting, we discussed the Open Space Trust Fund, the Five-Year Capital Plan, and introduced funding ordinances for road repairs and reconstruction. This evening, we're gonna be meeting with the Electric Utility Superintendent and the Public Works Director to discuss their capital needs, accomplishments for 2019, and goals for 2020. We will also review and discuss the financial performance for the electric utility and the water utility. We'll also talk about the electric utility dividend, as well as the targeted 200 electric utility rebate, which is offered to all income-eligible residents. You know, one of our primary goals as elected officials is public safety. When we say that, you may think of police and fire, but providing safe and reliable water and electric is also extremely important for public safety. As I say, if the power goes out, you can always light a candle, I've been saying this for years, but we are all in trouble if the water stops, and it's not good. The Budget Process revolves around the 2014 Strategic Planning Guidelines. The process started back in the summer when administration started developing the capital and operating budgets with the department heads. Over eight council meetings, the Governor body, governing body, will discuss open space, capital, utilities, the municipal budget, and the department operating budgets. As a reminder, we have three budgets that we vote on and approve. The water utility budget, the electric utility budget, and the current fund or main municipal budget. It is a very transparent and open process, and voting on the budget is one of the most important things that this council does. Anyone who has any questions about that should visit the annual budget process page on Rosenet. The remaining budget hearing schedule is as follows. February 10th, Police Operating Budget, the initial municipal budget discussion, and a municipal surplus discussion. February 24th, the remaining department heads will come in and present. On March 2nd is the second public discussion on the municipal, electric and water budgets. If this all goes well and there is consensus, then on March 30th, we will introduce the official state budget document. And after waiting the mandatory four weeks, there will be a vote to hopefully adopt the budget at our April 27th meeting. So please come. The budget is important to us, it should be important to all the residents as well. So we welcome you coming and listening to the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From Engineering, Burnett Road, and we're looking at the 2020 road improvements. Burnett Road has been submitted to the NJ DOT for review, and the bid documents have been advertised this week for the other 2020 road improvement work. The recycling center, work continues on the new recycling center, and that should be completed in the next couple of weeks. And then, finally, bid documents for the Dodge Field Playground Building will be advertised next month. From DPW, DPW continues to maintain all borough vehicles. They are doing general parks maintenance, leaf pickup, they have been repairing potholes on woodland and over hill, and patched Park Avenue, Elm, Loveland. And as the mayor's mentioned, we are going to have a presentation, we're going to be talking about the plastic ban ordinance. We are also going to hear from the Shea Tree Management Board on a proposed tree ordinance. And then, finally, some really good news. The Sustainable Madison received a grant of $10,000 from the Sustainable Jersey for a feasibility study to look at possibly citing solar arrays at the MRC parking lot, the swimming pool parking lot, and Kings Road parking lot. So, a big shout-out to Kathy Kavall and Peter Flut, who were responsible for putting that grant application together. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Great news. Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's talk about seniors first, there's a few items on the seniors that I'd like to talk about. First is, the Trittown 55-plus Coalition, on January 22nd, held a Housing and Transportation Forum for 35 invited guests from the three municipalities, Madison, Chatham Borough, and Chatham Township, to discuss needs, options, barriers for seniors, and to develop two task forces to work on potential solutions. Representative Cheryl, Mikey Cheryl stopped in to lend support and encouragement. Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, lunches offered before each Senior Citizens Advisory Committee meeting to attract more people to attend. At the first of these, 30 people attended. All meetings are open to the public, and we ask you to let us know ahead of time, so we can be sure to have enough food. The next lunch brunch will take place on Thursday, February 13th, at 12:00 p.m. at the Pine Acres will be providing the food and drinks. Also, Representative Cheryl's office casework team will be available to help constituents navigate federal agencies, such as the IRS, Social Security, the VA, and Medicare, on Thursday, February 13th, from 12:00 to 2:00, at the Madison Civic Center, just before the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, at 28 Wallon Street. If you cannot make it, you can contact Representative Cheryl's office in Parsippany at 973-526-5668. For the Senior Center itself, tax return preparation appointments are now available and are offered on Wednesdays at the Civic Center. We ask everyone to please call the office to make sure their times are available, since they do fill up very fast. Our van, the Senior Center van, is now offering weekly trips outside of Madison. Our top trips are to Walmart and the Livingston Mall, and a third location of their choice, based on yearly survey results. We are now encouraging folks to utilize the Florham Park Summit Medical Campus to use the van to and from their appointments. We urge residents to join Community Pass to learn about our services and programs. From the Chamber of Commerce, The Taste of Madison is being held on Monday, March 23rd, at the Brook Lake Country Club. Rosenet has the information to obtain tickets. The Museum of Early Trades and Crafts just opened its newest main gallery exhibit, surveying the New Jersey landscape, which explores the Garden State's backdrop as a colorful and diverse environment. The exhibit includes stories about every early mapmakers, landscape architects, and surveyors, and features many artifacts from the museum's own collection. In connection with this exhibit, the museum is hosting a discussion in collaboration with the Raritan Watershed Partnership on February 6th, and a special evening on March 26th with Diane Stringham, an experienced mountaineer who submitted, who summited Mount Everest. The museum is also moving forward with conservation and restoration work on the interior of the building to repair the decorative paint finishes that have been compromised over the years. This work will be funded in part by Morris County Historic Preservation Trust. The Recreation Department, the spring and summer 2020 schedule has been generated and is available by request. We are currently slated to host 16 programs across 12 fields. Rental applications are being accepted for the upcoming season. Rental revenue for 2020 should total about $37,000. Niles Park, the Rosedale Soccer Field at Memorial Park, and the Ice Rink Field will not be used as athletic fields this spring in accordance with the required resting schedule. The 5th-8th grade ski club successfully completed its first trip to Mount Peter on January 17th with 220 children and chaperones. Registration for Spring Track is now open and can be accessed via the Recreation page on Rosenet. And lastly, we have been unable to officially open the Rosedale Ice Rink, has not been open so far this winter due to unseasonably warm conditions, so please stay away from there, but updates on its status are posted on Rosenet. If you wish to be notified if it opens, please sign up for Recreation email and/or text alerts via notify me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Health, Ms. Cohen.
Before I get to the health report, two notes on some things that have occurred. On Tuesday, January 21st, after a six-month process, a redesign of the borough website, rosenet.org, went live. Throughout the six-month process, an internal team identified areas that needed attention, including ease of use by residents, design, and content. The end product, which is now live, brings in a lighter design, a latest news carousel for the most up-to-date information within the borough, a citizen help center with quick links for some of the top visited pages, and a cleanup of the global navigation menus. We hope that visitors appreciate the even friendlier website and refresh look, and encourage any questions or comments to be directed to communication@rosenet.org. In addition, residents are encouraged to download the free Recycle Coach app and never miss another collection. With its easy-to-use calendar, you'll be able to find the most up-to-date recycling, garbage, yard waste collection schedule, use its simple what goes where feature, and receive push notifications regarding holiday or weather schedule changes. Check it out on rosenet.org, or simply download the free app through the App Store or Google Play. And for the Health Department, flu vaccine is still available for residents. It has elevated over the past few weeks. I can tell you we're on week three in my household as it goes through everybody. Residents are asked to cover their coughs and sneezes to contain droplets during symptoms with fever. It is advised to stay home to protect yourself and others. Retail food store licensing is still in process. All retail food stores will receive their 2020 licenses to operate their establishments. A reminder that dog and cat licensing are being completed in the Borough Clerk's office this year. However, if brought to the Health Department, the application will be accepted and transferred as a convenience. We are asking for dog and cat licenses to be completed as soon as possible, but due to the transition from the Health Department to the Clerk's office, we are extending the deadline without a fine to February 29th. There is no local concern at this time with the coronavirus. The CDC has dispatched investigators to major airports to assure that individuals with symptoms are medically treated to avoid spread of the virus. The Health Department is monitoring the CDC and State Department of Health link system to monitor activity within the country for both the coronavirus and seasonal flu activity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Erlich.
Thank you, Mayor. The Electric Utility crews were called out several times this month for localized outages due mostly to high winds and weather conditions. This past Saturday, January 25th, the standby crew was called to a pole fire in front of the Kings Road substation due to a failure in a minor piece of aged equipment. At the scene, the crew determined that the top of the pole was damaged, so they called in additional electric department personnel to help shut down the circuit on the pole and tie it in with another circuit. This caused some brief flickers in power, but there was no outage to the town. Took approximately two hours to complete the job. Crews were back on-site today to complete repairs at the pole that was damaged. In the meantime, LED streetlight replacement work continues despite the recent cold snap we've had. And recently, while the crew was indoors due to inclement conditions, the crew washed and waxed all of the bucket trucks, which was a point of pride for our Electric Utility Superintendent, who I had the pleasure to meet last week. I met Jim Matina and his department on a tour of the water and light plant. I also met with Ken O'Brien, Department Head of the DPW, and Tom DeBiass, the Foreman of our water utility. It was really a pleasure to tour the facilities on John Street. Jim, Ken, and Tom acquainted me with our systems and provided an excellent introduction to our utility infrastructure and operations, including capital projects and the everyday work that's required to maintain our public utilities in a state of good repair. The electric and water facilities are organized, well-maintained, and really, it was a treat to take a tour. The crews that I met and the facilities that I had a chance to see are really a testament to the pride that our superintendent, foreman, office staff, and their utility crews take in their work. So, thank you to our department heads for that experience. That's it for Utilities.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
Unreceived.
Thank you. All right, now we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion. For those that don't come here on a regular basis, this is limited to items on our agenda discussion, and also resolutions. If you want to comment on anything else, there'll be a second discussion period later in the meeting. I will go through the agenda discussions and the resolutions, so you know what to comment on, and also, you'll know what's on the consent agenda when we get to that. So we will be leading off, will be the tree protection ordinance, Borough Utilities and Surplus as part of the budget discussion, followed by the electric utility rebate, and then a discussion on the minor revisions that are projected for the plastic bag ban, which we'll replant to introduce that ordinance at the next meeting. And these are the following resolutions that are part of the consent agenda, in case you want to comment on them. Resolution 56, awarding contract to DMB Cleaning for cleaning services at the Civic Center, Water, Electric Building, and Police Department for 2020. This is a contract not to exceed $32,400 and funded through the 2020 municipal budget. Resolution 57 is authorizing continuation of the electric utility rebate program, and that's an amount of $200 one-time credit for those that meet the qualifications. Resolution 58 is accepting a donation from the Madison Garden Club of a sculpture for the Rose Garden Park. Resolution 59, appointing Diane Hines and Geraldo Friscoli to the position of substitute crossing guards, and this is funded through the 2020 Police Department budget, and the salaries are in the enabling ordinances for salaries. Resolution 60 is authorizing 2019 budget transfer of $3,000. Resolution 61 is renewal application for livery owners license for travelers taxi and limousine. And Resolution 62 is also a permit for, another permit for travelers taxi and limousine. Resolution 63 is authorizing Good Grief Incorporated to hold a 5K run at Gerald A. Farms on Sunday, June 7th. Resolution 64 is awarding certain non-fair and open contracts for the Joint Municipal Court for the Madison, the Chatham's, and Morris Townships. These relate to prosecutors and public offenders. Resolution 65 is authorizing extension for renewal of pet licenses, as mentioned in the report, from January 31st to February 29th. But remember that the 29th is a Saturday, so make sure you do take care of it in time. Resolution 66 is authorizing final payment and change order requests for national water main cleaning in the amount of $69,900 for emergency sewer lining replacement project. This is funded through Ordinance 45 and 9, 2019. Resolution 67, authorizing purchase of engineering department vehicle under Educational Services through the Educational Services Co-op. This is for a 2024 Escape, in the amount not to exceed $32,139. Resolution 68 is authorized change order request from Denville Line Painting, the amount of $6,124.70, bringing the total contract to $51,124.70. This was funded through Ordinance 1-2019. Resolution 69 is awarding a contract for tree trimming removal services to honor tree service. This is funded through the 2020 budget, based on $87 an hour and a chart on tree size removal also. Resolution 70 is temporarily establishing the 2020 electric utility dividend rates. We'll be hearing about that shortly. So those are the resolutions you may comment on, or any of the four discussion items. If there's anything else, remember you can hold off to the next time. So if you need to comment on those, please step forward, state your name, your address, and the topic that, either the, one of the four discussion things, or the resolution you're speaking on, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I will give you a one-minute grace period and ask you to stop at four. Welcome, Tom.
Hello, Mayor, hello everybody on council. Tom Harlan-Pudis, 7 Palm Hill Road. I wanted to question you, or just discuss, or hear a little bit more detail about the tree protection ordinance, which I did read about. And I saw in the resolution, something that seemed like a conflict, because there was one section that says if you remove a tree, if you remove a tree and you don't replace it, you have to pay $350 per removed tree to the tree fund. That seems pretty excessive, because I don't think it costs us that much to plant a new tree in the borough, but I guess that needs a little clarification. But then on another page, says that you have to also submit a 25 But then, on another page, says that you have to also submit a $25 tree permit just for the application. That's just one time. It's not per tree. That's not very clear either. It's a really long ordinance, so it probably needs a little more explanation to the community, because I remember we tried this maybe 10 years ago, and there was a lot of opposition because some of the language seemed to be very prohibitive to property owners to re-landscape. And I'm in favor of some kind of tree ordinance too, because I don't like clear-cutting properties either. But this has a lot of contradictions, it seems, and also, the arborist seems to have a lot of authority over what's going on on somebody's property. So, I don't know if you, who even wrote this, Mayor?
We'll cover all that during the presentation.
Okay. All right. So, that was my question.
Thank you. So, as I said, we'll cover that. And just so people understand the plan right now, because as Tom pointed out, it is an early, extensive ordinance, a lot of pages, and so, we plan to introduce tonight, but to have the final hearing at the second meeting in February, so everyone has time to digest the information. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to agenda discussions. Yep, Maureen, do you want to introduce Jean?
Oh, yes. I'd like to introduce Jean Krokovia, who is Chairman of the Shade Tree Management Board, which has been working diligently on crafting a tree protection ordinance, which would bring us into compliance along with other municipalities here in Morris County and in the surrounding area.
Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. I thought I was going to go after the utilities presentation, so getting us up top.
Yep, nice. I think that was the promise I made to you, too, so.
All right. So, here to talk about the tree protection ordinance that we're proposing. First of all, the council, hopefully in your package, you have a copy of the ordinance. You have a copy of a one-page summary, which tries to simplify when a permit is needed and when a permit is not needed, and also talks about the replacement.
Jean, if you can make sure you're close to the microphone.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, in that package, you have three different ordinance, some one-page clarification of the permits and replacement tree, and then we had some additional factual information about trees, which I'll refer to some in the presentation, but there's more reference in your package. The, just want to make sure that people know there is an established tree ordinance today, which is Chapter 45, which created the Shade Tree Management Board, and also took over or defined the management of public trees. All right? So, that exists, and now we wanted to build on top of that. The Chapter 45 was actually passed in 1984 and revised approximately in 2001. I've been on the Shade Tree Board for about 15 years, so have some experience on the original tree protection ordinance, and now on this one.
What?
Okay. The data that I'll be presenting, I'll give you some quantification of some of the value of trees, and I want to let you know it's, a lot of it comes from a program called iTree. iTree is a software program that talks about, you know, you give a certain parameters, and it then gives you values of trees. It's recommended by the New Jersey Forest Service and widely used in the New Jersey tree communities. All right? Just one little background information. Myself, I was born in the Bronx, and I was trying to think about what was my first memory of trees and tree canopies. And I refer to the game hide-and-seek, which I guess you all have played. It's where people go out and hide, and one person has to go and find you. Well, people usually go hide behind garbage cans, behind cars. I always found that nobody looked up, so I always climbed a tree. Okay? Now, the good news was, I was never found. Okay? The bad news was, the game ended. They never told me, and I always was up in a tree many more minutes than I should have been. But I got to experience a tree canopy and how a tree canopy can hide many, many things. So, there's some good and bad things about the tree canopy. So, what? I want to leave this theme with you and kind of base everything that we're talking about, is what we do with our trees affects not just ourselves, but affects our neighbors and our community. All right? So, the trees are resources that, I'll share with you some data and some facts. You look at all the different things that we can talk about the trees do. You know, the CO2, we keep, hear about it constantly in the news. It's going in the wrong direction. When you look at this list, there's really one common thing on this list. We have many ordinances, by the way, that attack some of these things, but a tree or trees are common to all of them. For instance, you have on the CO2, you have ordinances about car idling, so that's on the books. Okay? But trees are the best engine for collecting CO2. They're the most efficient carbon capture machines that exist in this world. I keep on reading in the news, and if you see it also, there's constantly tree programs being all over the world. I read today that in Africa, they've changed a million tree program to a trillion trees they want to now plant for the sole purpose of trying to protect the environment. The, I'm not going, you know, there are studies behind all of these items. I'll share with some of the data that these studies prove. Property value. Studies have shown that trees, well, trees placed on property will increase your property value by seven to 19%. Okay? People like to see trees on their property. Cooling and heating. Trees positioned correctly can save 25 to 35% in energy consumption per year. That's a lot of, lot of energy savings. If we have heat islands, which we do in certain parts of the town, trees placed strategically can reduce that by nine degrees. Noise pollution. For the people that live along the train tracks, where New Jersey Transit cleared all of the trees, ask them about sound of the trains now that all those trees are gone. So, it helps the noise pollution. The people who live on Shady Lawn Drive right now, with the clearing of the trees for the new field at FDU. I know there's going to be a burn bill to replace some of them, but you just ask those people, do they hear the cars on Masson Avenue? And they surely do hear them. Quality of life. You know, it reduces stress. Just a couple of ideas. If you haven't had a chance, to take a walk on the new trails in Somme Hill Park, or take a walk in the deer-excluded area in MRC, or take a walk behind Memorial Park into the back behind the skating pond. You'll feel a great difference, and some people call this forest bathing, but it really makes a difference in reducing stress, and I encourage you to go into our parks, go into our, see our trees, and feel our trees, and get that experience. Why does need for the ordinance? Madison is losing its large tree canopy. Just to give you a baseline, Drew did a study for us a few years back, and they're able to baseline what our tree canopy is right now. It's at 41%, which is a decent-sized number. All right? But large trees are coming down for lots of different reasons. We lost the big beech tree at the train station. Okay? There was a beautiful beech on Cross Gates Road about six months ago that came down. In the Fairview section, which has lots and lots of big trees, we're losing some of those trees. And why are we losing them? Insects is one thing. You've heard about the ash tree, MLash Bor, that it's, hasn't been in Madison yet that we know of anyway, but it's in Morris County. And we, last couple of years, have removed our ash trees on Noe and Burnett in anticipation of losing all those ash trees. There's a new insect out now called a spotted lantern fly, which is attacking maple oaks and black walnuts, as well as many fruit trees. So, the insect world is changing. The climate world is changing. Okay? I don't know if you remember about last year, but our average rainfall was about 10 inches below normal. Okay? So, what we're seeing is greatest swings of the climate. Who thought we would have had a tornado in Madison? Okay? So, we're seeing extremes at both ends, either very long dry periods, winds exceeding more than normal. All these are affecting the trees. What is this causing, though, is people are getting afraid about trees around their houses. And after these major storms, we hear stories, anyway, of people wanting to get rid of all their trees because afraid that they may fall in their house. Certainly, trees that are unsafe by their house should be checked and verified, and if they're unsafe, they should be removed. But just, you know, taking down all healthy trees because afraid, fear of the next storm is probably not the right way to go. There's also some fear of this ordinance. Okay? I hear stories where people say this ordinance is going to come, I'm going to take my trees down now. I just want us to remember that, you know, what you do with your trees affects your neighbor, affects the community, and it's very, in some sense, short-sighted for following that path. Another problem with our trees and where we're losing trees is trees are not being protected well during construction. If you look at any construction site, you usually see a portable toilet, and where is it? It's on that nearest tree, right on top of its root structure. So, one thing that we've been struggling with for many years is protection of, the proper protection of trees during construction. All right? We do have some ordinances to protect the public trees. We have no ordinance to protect the private trees. We have guidance. Okay? But with this ordinance, we're hoping that we can, with an arborist, professional arborist, who's trained on how to protect trees, that will be able to save many more of these trees. Here's another example of some of the canopy trees we've lost. This is on Lewanaka, the top two. I don't know if you remember, if you've driven on Lewanaka, but there were some beautiful large trees on these properties that before, before we knew it, they were all taken down. When I saw it, as I saw the giant logs, you know, stacked up, and they were some big trees. Now, you have no trees at all on a property. It went by today, and not one hardwood tree has been planted on those properties. You would see that the Shade Tree Board has planted some nice hardwoods along the road, but we've lost the hardwoods on those five or six houses. On the left, you see the FDU fields. You know, they were approved to clear those trees. The number of trees was probably in the 50 to 100 range, and one of the things that this ordinance would try to help is that there's been no replacement strategy for these trees. Okay? We do know there's going to be some planting of some barrier trees along Shady Lawn Drive, but if you take all the trees that came out in the back, there's, you know, we just don't not have a replacement program that's going to match all the benefits of those trees that got removed. And finally, what people are doing on the right-hand side, yeah, they're planting trees, but they're very nice, very pretty, but they aren't going to restore our canopy years from now. Just not canopy trees. I did mention the construction. Here is a picture to the left of a recent construction site in Madison, and you see the heavy equipment underneath the one large tree. That particular tree was supposed to be saved during the construction, and the diagram on the right talks about, you know, what you need to do to try to save the trees during construction. The critical root zone is the trip line, but the roots go much further out, and what kills the trees is compaction. You compact the soil, takes the oxygen out of the soil, and that's what kills the roots. And so, eventually, those trees will be compromised. And, you know, when we have these plans, we approve them, we approve them with, these trees should be saved, but we find that we have very minimal enforcement and people monitoring the protection of those trees. So, those trees will eventually be less, will die much sooner than they should have. Okay, how the current version has developed. So, there was a proposed ordinance back in around 2006, 2007. At that time, there was not support for it, so it was withdrawn. So, that ordinance wasn't sitting on the books. So, we took the best out of that ordinance. Then, we looked at other ordinances that had been in existence for a very long period of time and tried to take the best pieces out of them. And, you know, these other ordinances have been implemented for many years. People have a lot of experience on how they work, and so, you know, they've been proven. One particular portion of the ordinance that we took has been legally tested, and that's the tree replacement strategy. Okay? So, we looked at what was working in other municipalities. We had our ordinance reviewed by two arborists that are literally arborists for other municipalities. The Shade Tree Board certainly worked on the ordinance, but we've been involving borough staff, engineering and zoning staff, administration, and the legal. And so, you know, it's been reviewed at least internally, and we think we have, you know, what should go forward. The highlights of the protection ordinance, a key ingredient, a key item is the establishment of an arborist. You really do need a professional, a licensed professional, to help us understand how to protect our trees. All right? Many municipalities have this as a position. It's not a full-time position. Usually, it's a contracted, part-time position, but it's an expert. Okay? And their job is how to, what trees should be removed, what trees should get replaced, and provide guidance. Many times, we get calls into the Shade Tree Board about this giant tree being removed, you know, on private property, and we have absolutely no idea why. It could be a dead and diseased tree, but we, you know, with an arborist at least on staff, we can at least be involved in finding out why that tree is being removed, and does the, can the tree be removed, and should it have a permit or not? It defines when a permit is required and when not required. Hopefully, the one-page summary tries to clarify that. I do know some of it can be complicated because of the legal constructs of the words. It defines when we want to need replacement trees. Again, this is a big difference. We really want to try to start replacing our canopy for the ones that we're losing. Okay? And not with small, little conifers, but some hardwoods that eventually will grow, you know, into the big trees that we're losing. Another small thing in this ordinance is to make sure that New Jersey Transit and JCP&L, anytime they have any tree work, that they review it with the Shade Tree Board and the arborist, so that we know what they're doing ahead of time. Now, here's a chart that talks about the municipalities. Tree protection ordinance, private tree protection ordinances. All the green are the ones that have them, and the white are the ones that don't have them. I think there's 22 of them, 22 of them in the green, and we have one white with a Madison, and then one in Long Hill, I think that is township. So, we're surrounded by people that are living So, we're surrounded by people that are living with this type of an ordinance. They're living a day-to-day, you know, it's working, okay? You know? And I must also say that the ordinance cannot define every situation that we'll be facing. That's why you have an arborist, and that's why the arborist does have some leeway. And if it's a professional, they can make some professional decisions on a case-by-case basis. But here again, you know, this is not new around us, people living it. We lived very close at Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, Summit, and Florham Park, since they're directly related next to us, and have, you know, taken the best from that, the best from them. All right. Wanted to share just some of the work we did and, you know, why we did, just to give you a sense of what it is. By the way, we define a tree, the beginning of a tree is six inches. This is what a six-inch tree's size is in diameter. It may look small, but if, depending on the tree species and the environment, this could represent 20 to 30 years' worth of growth. That's how long it would take to grow this sized tree. That's the beginning of it. Now, in our ordinance, we picked the size 16 inches as being a significant tree, and we want to get involved, you know, when these trees are being talked about being removed. This particular tree, again, based on species and based on the environment, could represent a tree that's either 50 or 80 years old, right? That means it was planted somewhere in the 1940s or 1950s, and that was before Madison was really fully developed. To replace the value that this one 16-inch tree is giving us today, using iTree again, would take approximately 121 2-and-a-half inch caliber trees to replace the value of it. So, you can see, the big trees give us a lot of value of which we're really going to try to save. Back again. So, I'm hoping that we go forward with this. We think it's time for it. We think it's been proven in other municipalities. There's going to be challenges certainly about it. It's going to be challenged education to both the residents, to the developers, and to the tree companies. So, there's got to be an education program that's been instituted. Arborist is a key person. It's got to be selected carefully. Lots of interchange with the residents representing the borough. And what I'm proposing that, you know, like any other ordinance that has some complication to it, you pass it, institute it, work with it, and then maybe in a year, we'll come back and give you a report and say, "Okay, what do we need to change?" The land use ordinance in Madison is very complicated, but that thing gets updated at least once a year, maybe twice a year, depending on the needs. And that's what we're saying with this ordinance also. And I want to leave again with the thought that what we do with our trees affects our neighbors and our community. Past comments on the previous ordinance, and I think I heard a little bit tonight, you know, I'm for a tree ordinance, but it's got to be, you know, it's got to be the right ordinance, all right? We ask more what that means, and we get very little feedback of, "What should we change?" Okay? So, you know, there's never going to be a perfect ordinance. I think it's a step in the right direction. Again, it's got a lot of experience, a lot of other towns, and, you know, I think we should proceed with it, so.
Thank you, Gene, for a great presentation and all your work on this and the work from the Shade Tree Management Board. I think there was three of us that were at the table in 2006. And so, and at that time, that map looked a whole lot different than it does now, and I think that was one of the challenges, and certainly, we, Madison's often a leader, a leader in this area. This time, we're a follower, but it's never too late to join the game, so I think it's good. Just two things before I open up to the council for questions and comments, just to address Tom's questions. So, in there, it's, if you remove a tree, you can plant another on your property, but if you can't do that, you can pay into the tree fund, and it's set at 350. Where did that number come from, and how would that fund work?
Okay. The number it came about, you know, we experienced, we buy trees from Madison every year, and the tree price usually ranges anywhere between $125 to $200, depending on what species. And then, what usually tree companies do is they double the price for the planting. In Madison, DPW does our planting, so basically, for the Madison street trees, it costs us the price of the tree. So, we took that number and said, "That's probably an average number for a decent-sized tree." We probably could, you know, if somebody could plant a tree and the arborist approves of that tree at a lower price, then we would go with it probably. The idea of, if it doesn't fit your property, you know, if you take down a large tree or there's no place to put these, the idea is create a tree fund, where we would start to create funds that are dedicated for planting trees in other places, other places being as close to that property as possible, being borough property, obviously. So, it's a way of compensating for the loss of a tree where you cannot plant a tree on your property, where it doesn't make sense to it.
So, if you're able to plant it on your property, you got a tree company that did it for $200, it costs you $200. And you talked about the, one of the advantages of being late to the game is legal tests. As you just pointed out, one of the things that did come out with tree funds is when towns took the money in one sector and did all the planting in another sector, that the fact that it will be done pretty much in the neighborhood where the tree was.
The legal test, as you described, was that people said, "Well, I don't want to give money to a fund, and you're going to plant that tree, you know, on the other side of town." And so, the legal decision was, "Okay, you need to plant trees as close to that place where the tree was lost as possible." So, if there's a park nearby, that's the probable place.
And the other question that Tom had was the application, the permit application fee of $25, the, what's, what was that behind that?
For a tree, you need to provide an application fee of $25, and that's really to pay for the services of the arborist, to go and find out whether you should get a permit or not, type of thing.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Carmela, we'll start with you, and then Ostry.
Thank you very much, Gene. I was one of those three people that were here in 2006, so I have a lot of history. I know that this is a lot of work that has been coming, and the last introduction was not a very pleasant one. So, I hope that you understand there's going to be questions. Because I think that's necessary. We want to be as transparent to everybody, especially the private property owners, okay? That's real important. So, I think that one of the questions that Tom asked was about the arborist, and so that he understands that, you know, that this hourly basis is going to be from application fees, construction, escrow, and from professional services, budget line from Shade Tree. One of the things that I was concerned with when I heard Tom also talk about it was the It costs a lot of money to take a tree down. Unfortunately, one of our, one, our neighbor's big oak got very diseased, and it was leaning towards my house more than their house. And they had it taken down, and it cost her $3,000. These are two little old ladies that are living on pensions and social security. So, the cost of taking that down and then giving Shade Tree $350. So, somewhere along the line, we need to either incorporate that someplace or make that understood. There's going to be people here can't afford to do that.
Ordinance says, I believe, it states now that if a tree is diseased or dying, you not have to replace it.
Right.
Okay? Therefore, replace it or put money in a replacement fund. So, therefore, the $350 will not apply in that situation.
Yeah. You know, and I understand that, but it kind of stands out, the 350, and people need to understand that, so that there's an education process in that, okay? Somebody might say, "Hey, listen, you know, I'm getting a lot of fungus on my roof or whatever from that particular tree, I want to take it down." It's not diseased, but they take it down. They really can't afford to do that, but the cost of roofing or whatever, okay? So, I think you need some education, especially about this 350.
Okay.
Okay? All right? And maybe some latitude, you know, for the older folk that are still living here and the people who just don't have the means and still want to stay here. So, but, you know, thank you again for all your work. Been there, done that, and, you know, hopefully, everybody could come together with a good consensus about this.
Okay, thank you. Ostry?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's amazing, we've been designated as a tree city for how many years, and we're finally getting around to this, and we're the only, one of two white dots in the Hall of Morris County, and we pride ourselves on our community and how much we love it, and trees are definitely a very important part of our community. And I agree with Carmela that education is going to be extremely important. One question I have is, on page 10, you refer to a certified arborist as opposed to the municipal arborist. So, I wonder if a homeowner has their own certified arborist, and they say, you know, "This tree is dying," or "This tree is hazardous," or whatever, and disagrees maybe with the municipal arborist. What happens?
So, there's a disagreement, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So, there's an appeal process that we have.
You do the appeal.
Shade Tree Board, okay? And if you still don't agree with it, there's an appeal process that goes to the zoning board, all right? So, there actually is an appeal process.
Right, I saw that appeal process. So, what, so...
I mean, the idea of, if you have another arborist who documents a situation, we still want it to go through the process of a permit and then have our arborist go and verify it, okay? We're just not going to take, you know, a letter, all right?
Oh, you're not, okay.
We want to, we want to be able to work with arborists, by the way. And by the way, you know, there aren't tons of arborists out there, so most of these arborists know each other and get to have working relationships. So, depending upon that, it may be a little easier, but we do want it to be standard so that any tree from anybody, whether it's, you know, your arborist or somebody else, goes through the same process, throws a permit, and gets an assessment by the municipal arborist, okay?
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't quite sure about that, so, yeah. All right. Thank you.
As we come around.
Yeah, might as well. So, I'm just going to point out that trees are the lungs of the world. It's what, it's how, it's how we breathe, taking the CO2 out of, out of the air. And when we, when we take a tree out and we, as Gene said, taking one tree down, it's not a one-for-one replacement. It's a, it's a one-to-six or one-to-eight replacement in terms of that CO2, and it's also a longevity. You take a tree down, you plant a new tree, it's going to be 12 to 20 years before that the capability of that tree reaches what was there beforehand. And I'll also point out that this, there is a provision in here that property owners can take down up to two trees in a 24-month period, as long as they're six or below. Six inches. So, it's not as, I'm, it's known as, thank you, it's not as restrictive as it might seem. There's actually, there's a lot of leeway built in, lots of, you know, appeals process and things like that. We call ourselves the tree city, and the poem we heard earlier today talked about walking under dappled canopies. I walk a lot around town, and I like walking in the shade. I have this great Irish skin that doesn't like the sun too much, so I'm all for the shade canopy as if we can, if we can work to make sure that it works for, it works for everyone. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Come across to the other side.
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you very much for your 15 years of service, okay? And for the incredibly hard work that it took to pull this together. I think it's, it's a great, great job. Some of the questions I have are kind of nitpicky and technical in nature, need to be clarified for me, so maybe I can handle those with you separately. But overall, the, when I first saw the ordinance, and I'm glad we're getting an extra few weeks to take a look at it, it was complex, complicated, stringent, and lengthy, in my opinion, just by reading it on its surface, okay? I think, I think you're trying to focus on maybe four entities, borough trees, contractors and builders, transit and utility, and homeowners, it seems to me. That's kind of what we're looking at. I don't think there's anybody else that exists. So, I think, I think that ought to be clear in the ordinance, in the ordinance. It looks to me like it's kind of buried in there somewhere, or each, or four of those, so maybe they can be separated out, so it's clearer to people, particularly me. So, you know, those are my overall comments. Again, I think, there's no question in my mind that a tree ordinance is required. It's just got to be something that's understandable, takes into account the needs of homeowners, individual homeowners, because they are concerned about it. They don't respond positively when I talk to them about this. And so, we just need to be careful about that. And the paragraph on replacement trees seems to me to be the least stringent paragraph for me. I don't know why we need American Nursery and Landscape Association, and it's got to be guaranteed for two years. I don't understand all that, so I need to, I need to get an understanding of it. How much does an arborist cost, and where is the funds coming from to pay for it?
Okay, an arborist cost, well, first of all, we have to go out and get people to apply, and so, it would be, the process will be defined how much it actually would be.
Sure.
The funds are going to be coming from the permit fees on the construction escrow account, and currently, the Shade Tree Board budget does have a line item for professional services, which we believe can cover the total amount of work for the year.
But do we know approximately what an arborist is worth, or what it costs?
Years ago, it was like $75 an hour.
Okay.
So, it might be $95 an hour, but I can't quote that, I'm not the arborist.
I understand.
And people may come in with lower rates based upon...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Okay, that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you very much.
I do want to comment on your, you know, different groups. That certainly is a challenge, but one of the things we also want to try to make sure is that we treat everybody fairly and the same, so that a homeowner's process and a builder's process, okay, is consistent. You know, consistency is what we're really trying for. One, I think, the problems we had in our last ordinance was there was a great distinction between builders and homeowners.
Yeah.
And that's almost illegal to do, is what we were told. So, we're looking for consistency, fully understand the complexity and trying to make it simpler, and we'll talk to you one-on-one on some of the other items. But there's a lot to say to keep it consistent across the groups that are applying.
Yeah, I think that one of the things you're probably trying to do is eliminate clearcutting, you know?
Yeah.
Like we've seen around here in a couple of instances, like New Jersey Transit, you know, and Florham Park, I mean, the university.
Yep.
You know, so, I think that ought to be specific. I know you've got a paragraph in there, it's fairly complex.
Okay.
Paragraph, but it ought to be clearly stated, "Stop clearcutting. We don't let, we don't like it, we don't want it." And as far as, you know, the utilities and New Jersey Transit giving two weeks' notice, that's too short. I'd like to see it longer, so that we can prepare and notify people and do what we need to do to make sure that that happens correctly.
Okay.
Anyway, that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Deb?
Okay, I'm going to try and keep it short. And I say this as a true student from years ago and living in the forest and loving the forest. So, I'm going to ask my first question, which may clarify, and I don't have to ask the others. Is it $25 per application or $25 per tree?
Per tree.
Okay. So, what's the reason behind that, is I guess the first part of that? The reason being, if I'm somebody that's, you know, I've removed my two trees that I'm allowed to remove, and I want to remove two more, that's $50 for the permit, then potentially $700 to the tree fund if I don't plant two more trees on my property? Am I understanding that correctly?
If, in fact, you follow the rules that say you need to have a replacement tree, and you have no place on your property.
Right.
And we're asking for, you know, $350 into the fund.
Per tree or total?
Per tree.
Right.
To replace somewhere else.
That just, I, I... That just, I, I, going back to what Carmella was saying, that seems very steep for some people, where, you know, I just, I, I think we need to look and, one of the reasons, you said a tree costs between $125 and $200 potentially.
Sure.
You know?
And then the planting.
And then our DPW guys do it for free, because we're lucky. Well, free.
They don't do it for free, right?
Free. There's not an additional, they don't double the cost like a private person would. Let me put it that way. So, why is it $350 then? If you can get a tree for between $125 and $200, why are we tacking another $150 per tree on?
Because the fee to plant it is, they double it. So, I'm not saying, we're not committing DPW to planting those trees right now.
Okay.
Right? I, I don't have...
You're covering bases in case DPW can't
Right.
Do it. Okay.
They, they plant 100 and certain trees each year for us, then they go on and do other stuff.
Right.
Okay? So, they're not now at all committed to planting those trees for...
Right.
All right?
Right. I think, I just, I think, I think we do need to look potentially at that, at that fund. And I, I struggle with a per tree. And I know we're trying to prevent the clear cutting or people that are knocking down a house and putting up, you know, McMansions and making it to empty trees. And I, I totally, I totally understand that. But I just worry, we're, we're, I don't want to say we're nickel and diming, but in some ways, we're nickeling diamond if we're doing 25 per tree. If, it's an app, now, if they do it a second year, then yeah, it's another $25 for that fee. So, it's just something I'd like you to consider. And then going to your consistency, my concern there at $25 per tree is if, for some reason Drew does need to cut down 50 trees. I don't expect them to. They better not, as said, as an alum. But if for some reason, there's a reason they need to, it, they're going to have to pay $25 per tree to cut down 48 of those trees?
So, my experience with Drew so far is the only trees they're removing is because they're dying dangerous or need to be removed.
Right.
Okay? The only other time we dealt with Drew was when they, the last time they had their building. And we actually worked very close with them on, you know, each tree that had to be removed, whether it should be or not. So, they didn't find it very difficult at that point in time. The one thing we didn't have with them, and when they built, I think it was a dorm they were building, was a replacement strategy. Okay? And so, we are asking people who take down trees to start paying back a tree canopy.
And I appreciate that. I just worry, again, and I, I don't expect Drew to be building a dorm and taking down...
Again, the arborist, the arborist can downsize the number of replacement trees based on factors.
Right. You know, but, so that, the, the cost to everybody is a concern on that front. And then the timing, you talked about the appeal process, which I think is great that it's there. But it looks like, from what I understand in talking to Ray and, and Jim and Ostry, it's about a 90-day process if they go through that appeal. Is that, is that about accurate?
Depends on...
If they go all the way through the zoning board?
If they go all the way through. It could, it could be long. I'm, I'm expecting very, very minimum appeals to the zoning board. Okay? It would, you know?
Right.
If you appeal the zoning board, then you got to get into lawyers and other kind of stuff.
Oh, right. Yeah. And I don't know that many people would do that.
And one would hope that one could settle it without that.
And then my last question is on the, the summary sheet, which is fantastic, because it does clarify it. And I don't know if this is something we can do. I'm looking at the administration. If we can get this up on the
RoseNet?
website on RoseNet, so that people have a, because it does help clarify things. I don't know if we're allowed to do that. But no permits required with two trees that are less than 16 inches, which is your big, you know, your big diameter. If you remove those two trees and then you want to remove
A third tree?
A third tree.
Within a 24-period? Okay.
Right. Within that two, 24-month period, it has to be...
Now, we start, we're kicking at the six-inch and upper.
Right. And I'm just thinking, like, I look at my backyard. I think almost all of my trees are in that, like, and I get what you're sa, you know. So, again, I'm just not sure what the discrepancy between 16 inches and then going all the way down to six. I get that you don't, you want to discourage it, and that's part of it.
Right.
But where did six come from, rather than like a 10-inch or a 12-inch, you know, sort of thing?
Okay. It's an arbitrary decision what we think a tree is starting to be a tree. You know, you go down to two inches, then probably not. So, we pick six. All right?
Okay. And I, and I get it. We bought a, got a sapling at Drew two or three years ago. They were doing the, the free saplings. I went over the phone.
Yeah.
And it's a sycamore. And it's, it's grown, but I mean, it's still, I think, the trunk is this big three years later. So, I get that, you know, you're trying to get...
Again, six inches, we said 20 to 30 years old already. So, it's been there a long time.
You know, so, that, that just seemed like a big difference between the 16 inches down to six. That was my only, you know, and again, I get, you don't want, you don't want to discourage, you don't want to have 16 inches and then 12 inches, because it's too close and people go, ah, you know. But just, just some questions. I'm all for it. Like I said, I was a Drew student. I, I, and I, I love the canopy. I just want to make sure that we're not burdening our residents with too much.
Yeah. And I want to preface it. I don't think this is really mainly at the residents doing what they want to do in their yard. Okay? That's not our problem. Our basic problem is a house gets bought, somebody wants to rehab it or knock it down, and they clear cut the whole lot. Okay? The second biggest problem we have is we have approved construction going on, and we want to save these six beautiful trees, and they're not saved. Those are the major areas that we're trying to focus on. And as you get to these smaller cases, resident by resident, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis. And that's why you want to give the arborist, you know, some power and some authority to be able to make rational, reasonable decisions.
I guess that goes to John's point, is it just seems very complex, because when you talk about it, I can, it makes perfect sense, what you're saying. I read this three times. I met with Ray. I met with Jim. I met with Carmella. I met with Ostry. Maureen and I talked on the phone, and I obviously still don't fully...
Those are the wrong people, because I didn't understand.
That's what happened. That's the difference. The old joke, what's the difference between arborist and a lawyer? Arborist makes it pretty straightforward.
No, 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 no. I know. It's all good. But so, I guess that's my, my concern is I have a bank of people that was very easy for me to get in contact with. I could have reached out to you and, and called and asked questions. The random resident that sees this ordinance is going to go, what the hell are they thinking and what are they doing? And when you explain it, I can go, oh, okay, that makes sense. That makes sense. The only thing I still disagree on are the fees and the cost, but that, you know. So, I just, that I think is my concern, and I share it with John, that we got to make sure it's clear what exactly we're trying to do, rather than get bogged down in
Right.
the ordinance, which all of our ordinances drive me crazy, because they're all leaving...
If you look at any of the other ones, by the way, those 22 other ordinances, they're not going to be much simpler. Okay?
No, and I get that, you know. But that's why I actually, this is, this was helpful. You know, and I think maybe if we clean this up even just a little bit more, that might be enough for people to understand it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Rachel, do you have a question?
Yeah, sure. I'll have a few comments. I, I find the proposed language to be consistent with standard specifications for quality plantings that come with a warranty. I mean, this is language that any landscape, landscape contractor or landscape designer would be familiar with. So, you know, in terms of the requirements and the language of the proposed ordinance, to the people that are needing to conform to it, I think the, the language is, is pretty intelligible. It, it sets standards that, you know, how do you characterize or quantify or qualify a tree? And it's through, you know, national standards that are set by, you know, landscape, the, the American Society of Landscape Architects, for instance. So, I, I think it's important to point out, because we keep getting hung up on removing a dead or dying tree, that if a tree is dying, or there's a hazardous condition, or it's been damaged in a storm, there's no requirement to replace the tree, either to plant a new one or to pay into the tree fund. And I think we kind of gloss over that. We're talking about trees that people just want to chop down, because they like the look of a big, green, open lawn, which is an aesthetic choice. And perhaps, you know, flower beds are appealing to some people. But I think Jean's point is well-taken, that, you know, trees have a huge value, not only to the homeowner, but to their neighborhood and to the whole town.
We always try to keep, hold back, and I appreciate the applause, but five people didn't get applause, and they might be hurt right now. So...
Look, I, for everybody.
Rachel, is there a but?
No. I, I just want to say, I spoke with a lot of residents last summer during my campaign to be elected to this seat. And I asked people about their concerns and priorities for our borough. And many residents expressed grave concerns about the loss of trees on their block and in their town. And the cognitive dissonance, when we hear the alarming news of skyrocketing carbon dioxide levels, deadly heat waves, we have parched soil and erosion, and to see trees coming down around you is just, it's terrifying. And I think this ordinance is a way that we, in a relatively low-cost and frankly beautiful way, can do our part to combat the climate crisis here in Madison and continue to reinvest in what makes our town so special and beautiful. So, I support this ordinance. And I think with a couple of suggestions that have been made with regard to like a tree, frequently asked questions, summary like the one you provided to the council members, I think a lot of this confusion could be cleared up. So, thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work, Jean. So, we have this listed for introduction. And as I mentioned, we'll have the hearing on February 24th. One process thing that, you know, there were some questions around fees and other things. If, if there is a change in the fees, that, that would be substantial, correct? And that would then need for reintroduction. But I, I don't want to lose our momentum. So, we will put it on for, keep it on for introduction and only reintroduce if necessary. That's...
That was correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Jean. We can applaud Jean, because he did a great job. Borough Utilities and Surplus.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to keep this part brief, so we can get quickly to our esteemed guests, our department heads, Ken and Jim. Tina's getting close to past our bedtime.
Yep. I apologize for...
I, as you know, I post a lot of information on these PowerPoints, mainly because I'm hoping that people will read it online. So, I'm not going to repeat any of the information here. Councilwoman Vitale talked about the proposed schedule. She talked about the budget cycle, the three entities, three capital accounts we've talked about, and is it a budget or is this spending plan and how the process works. I think people have seen this breakdown of our tax bill enough, and they'll continue to see it in this year's one-cheat budget summary. So, with that, I would like James Matina to come up here and talk about his department.
I'm going to click for you just a second. Hi, Mayor. I counsel.
Yep. And thank you for staying through the previous one.
Okay, here we go. All right. We're going to start with my 2019 accomplishments. We started painting all the poles, light poles downtown. We had interns do that, almost 100 poles. They painted all of them. We completed a new tie point going up Treadwell. It's a really good tie point. We, it ties in with our Madison Avenue circuit. 17 Greenwood Avenue, we finally completed that. That's the building next to Walgreens on Greenwood. Meadow Court, there's three houses there. That's been completed. That's off of Shumpike. Lewanica Terrace, off of Madison Avenue, there's four houses there. That was completed. The Lanta Health Rehabilitation Center is completed. And our new Butler Building is completed. The racks came in Friday. They've been installed. And it looks like our forklift will be in this week. Confined space entry was completed. And the meter department did a great job with a little help from electric department, installed 2,500 smart meters and did nine books. Okay. Going on to 2020 goals. We're still on the Madison Green Condos. We installed about four transformers over there. We still got to redo all the primary work. Kings Road, new tie point, we're still doing that, too. James Park Substation, replaced the relays. The relays came in two weeks ago, and we'll be doing that in February sometime. Wellby Station Road, installed new transformers and poles. We have all the equipment. We're just ready for the go. The new fiber line between Kings Road and James Park Sub, I don't know if we're going to get to that this year. We have a lot of other work. Replaced an open wire secondary that's going around all the neighborhoods with the old wire and poles and streetlights. We're going to try to do a couple streets this year. Bucket Truck Rescue, we'll be doing that this year. Pole Top Rescue, we'll be doing this, this year, too. And Substation R, EPR gets done every two years. And continue installing smart meters. And there's a long list of ongoing activities that we do every year, yearly. So, you guys want to look at that. I'll feel the, go through all that. You know, we got substation testing twice, three times a year. There's a lot here. Going down to a good page. The capital budget. I'm really going with the same stuff I asked for last year. There's really not too much changed. Automatic meters, $200,000. $50,000 for utility truck. $100,000 for that Madison Green. That's for the primary cable. And the primary voltage cable for Kings Road, that's that tie point. If we could do it, I'm going to have to use the money. The building repairs, $50,000. The forklift, I had extra money when I did my racks, so I bought the forklift from that. So, I don't need the $40,000, but I like to have the $40,000, so I could buy some LED lights this year, because we want to start out doing Ridge Dale Avenue with LED lights, maybe Kings Road and Central Avenue. $50,000 for transformers and LED streetlights. Signal cameras, $50,000. Dodge Field Maintenance, $10,000. And revenue funding for the substation, $300,000. That goes into a kitty. If we ever lose a transformer in our substations, we have money, because the sub, the transformer's like a million dollars. That's it.
Yes, Ostry?
I have one question.
Sure.
About the Dodge Field lighting.
Yes.
I know that when I've talked to the rec people and when we discussed the lighting at Dodge Field, there's been some concern that it really needs to be completely redone. So, I, I'm noticing that you've got, you know, $10,000.
That's just for maintenance.
For just maintenance.
Right.
Is that, is that a high number for maintenance? Should we really consider, I mean...
It's just changing bulbs, really. Bob Vogel's looking at the Dodge Field.
To...
To complete it, yeah, to redo it.
To redo it?
Yes.
Because it's a high number of, for maintenance.
Yeah. Well...
It's going to be even a higher number to replace.
Yeah. I mean, the wires are old. You know, we don't do that, so they hire an outside contracted to do that.
So, just to clarify, so before we spend the $10,000, we'll have an under, understanding of...
Maybe upgrading, yeah.
Right. What, yeah.
Yeah. That's not my call.
All right. Okay.
Carmella?
Yeah. Jim, just out of curiosity, I always wondered about this. Approximately, how many poles, transformers do we have? And how many been replaced? I know you, you have like, are you on like a two-year cycle to, to change transformers, or is it longer?
Yeah, we do it all the time. It happens. If you see, you know, we must have changed 30 transformers last year.
Like, how many do we have, like, in town? Do you know?
You get that number. Well, yeah. I don't have it in a double.
Yeah. I, I always wondered about that, because, you know, there's little squirrels. They're, they're always doing something to them.
But all this capital work that we're doing, all this planning, then you got a storm that comes around.
Yes.
Knocks us right off track.
Right.
You know, we still have 28 poles we have to replace from that storm. We just rigged everything up to put people back in power. Now, we got to go back...
You mean the tornado that we just had?
The tornado.
Oh, really? Okay.
And then Saturday, we had a pole fire. I mean, that's going to take three, four days to, you know, so it knocks you off track.
But, you know, the, the one thing that you hear all the time is, God bless the electric department. I mean, I, you know, I hear it more and more. And when I, when I get my, my alert and Mars Town is out, and Mars Township is out, and it was just raining on Saturday, you know, what had caused that? And they were out for a long time. So, JC P and L
Had a fire.
Really cannot accommodate, you know, 40,000 people being out of electricity. You know, when I think about how quickly, like, you had this fire on Kings Road, which was kind of, was a kind of a big surprise, terrible thing that happened at that substation. But we flickered.
Yep.
Didn't actually go out of electricity.
It stayed on, but we still had...
Yeah. And within a couple hours, everything was done. So, I, you know, we have to congratulate you.
Thank you.
You guys, because you, you do a great job. You're, you know, it's, it's one of the best things that ever happened to us, is having our own electric utility. So, we appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you. We're dedicated. I mean, that happened on a Saturday, and I called three guys in, and they came right in. I mean, they were busy with their personal life. They dropped everything and came right in.
Yep.
I mean, you can't ask for better than that.
Yep. Yep. Deb?
Just two things real quick. First of all, kudos to being one of the few people on Madison area parents on Facebook that constantly gets complimented, our electric department. It's always, "They're so great, everything's back up." Just a quick question. On the traffic signal, signals, you say camera actuator, what, are you putting cameras at the traffic lights?
That's...
It's not red light cameras?
No, no, I know, I just didn't know.
That's not mine.
That's something that Bob Vogel puts in, and it's a sensor, it looks like a camera. All it's doing is looking for the motion of someone pulling into a certain area or zone.
Okay.
And it actuates or activates the...
So we're not sitting at a light for four minutes while nobody's going, got it?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Well done, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Ken? Thank you for waiting. Sorry, I flipped around the agenda on you.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for having us. Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of things I'd just like to say before we get started. My career in public works, I've been in the public sector for 33 years, and I'd never dealt with a tornado before. And I just want to tell you how fortunate we are in Madison to have the department heads and the interoperating ability between the departments. When I called in that night, I was in contact with the fire chief and various members of the police department, communications, the electric utility. And as that storm, as daylight came, we realized it was a tornado. I mean, we'd been hearing from people, you know, it sounded like a train came through. But the municipality was really at the brink of a lot going on, and you had few key people here at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. And we worked as hard as we could. And the storm, as daylight came, things started developing. We started seeing some streets that were completely blocked off, that had no access to police or fire or ambulance, that people were still sleeping, so we didn't know about it. And, you know, we emergency opened up those roads right away, and we had trees blocking streets. And all the departments really pitched in, and we had firemen helping us drag brush off the streets, and firemen helping us do this, and the electric department and myself, you know, working around it. And that was a very big event for Madison. And if you look at the outcome of that, and we're still doing some cleanup for it, Mr. Matina talked about that, we came through it very well. And that was because there's a lot of prep work goes into this municipality, a lot. And we have meetings, and we talk about planning, and the administration updates us and knows what's going on. And the communications director puts out stuff so people know what's going on. It makes our life a lot easier. So if we don't have to always be answering the phone for every little thing. So when you see some of those posts, you know, people know, and Michael's getting the information out there, and there's reverse calls, and the calls coming in, that's all to assist us so that we're not bogged down with other information, you know, phone calls coming in and stuff. So I just want to let you know that that tornado, that thing went, you know, as well as it could have gone. And it was shocking to see the amount of damage. As daylight came, the mayor was out, and I was out with Ray and Jim. And as, you know, the light came, we were coming down some of the roads, we were amazed at what it looked like, because you couldn't see at night, and you didn't know. And it was just something really that we should be proud of as a whole organization. So thank you. Our two, some of our 2019 accomplishments, and there's quite a few, so we only listed a few here. Our department's very good at completing tasks. So we have more efficient sewer pumps that were installed in the Candlewood Station. We were having a problem with them. They were older pumps, and we worked very hard with the manufacturer and the installer, and we got a huge credit. We buy other pumps from them. They worked a government pricing thing out for us, and they were no cost to us. So we were able to replace those pumps, and they run a lot more efficient. And so now we're watching the electricity at that station, and it's dropping monthly. And because they're much more efficient or higher efficient. So when you replace an older pump, it's like an older car that used to get 12 miles to the gallon, and your newer car gets 25 miles to the gallon. So there's certainly some savings there besides the pumps themselves. The pump street station work at Capital for the well water and the sewer station is completed over on North Street. If you drive by down North Street, you'll see a little gate with a couple of little buildings in the back is a well station for water, and in the front is a sewer station. That sewer station, when I started working for the municipality, was getting flooded all the time. There's so much infiltration, rainwater, sewer water coming in during heavy rainstorms that we were going down there all the time, we were getting backups. That's all been eliminated. On a rare occasion, we do, when we have a deluge of water like we had on Saturday, we're going to get high water coming out of there. But we no longer have sewage coming out of the building and into the streets. We've made major improvements there. There's a holding tank that holds the capacity a little bit. It just works. And it was a long project. And I put out some pictures a while ago of a big tank going over North Street, you know, and people were like, "What is that for?" And I was like, "Well, that's what we're doing. That's some of the improvements." You can't see most of the improvements because they're below ground. But there's been major improvements to that North Street pump station. Our pre, our continuation of road treatment technology, something we implemented here a few years, we continued with it. And I'm just going to segue right into that with our snow budget for this year, that we're in very good shape. As...
I was going to say...
As Mr. Burnett will tell you, that we...
Yeah, I've been jinxed.
Load quite a bit into our snow budget and salt line because we never know. So we don't always want to be on the short end of that. And so when there's years when we don't have to use a lot, we know the municipality's going to use it for other things come the end of the year. Right now, our salt dome is in very good shape and, you know, loading it up by the time we come. So we figure we have another 60 days of winter season, and then maybe in some November. But salt-wise, which that budget line is in very good shape. But we have to keep a good amount in that line. So should we start having weekly storms or start, you know, December, January, we'll be able to order 500 tons at a clip, and that gets very expensive and moves on. So that's a very good thing, like you said. One of the things we're working on, and we've started, we've completed the mechanical maintenance division, the new windows. When we started working down there, the windows were single pane windows in the public works department. And so we went around, we started replacing them. We're working with a couple contractors. And we thought it better to do it in piecemeal because it's quite of an involved job, this framework. So we're doing that, about $40,000 a year. And we have a couple contractors that come in and they just take them out, and they have to reframe them. They're getting smaller, more efficient. It's a, it's a process. It's not like just changing a window. The windows are almost 20 feet high, and the length of some of them are 40 feet wide. So it's a bit of a process. So we're doing it in piecemeal, and it seems to be working out. And that'll make our building a little bit more efficient. Councilwoman Vogel came down the other day, and we tied a little tour of the building. We talked about some efficiencies and stuff, and maybe some future solar for the public works department for that building in that area, because we are a big user of the electric utility. And so I think that if we could find another more user-friendly or sustainable power source for public works, instead of taking it from one pocket and putting it into the other, you know, there might be a little bit of a savings there. And these are just some various pictures. That's one of the Candlewood Pump Station. That's about 22 feet below ground. You're looking at, I'm standing on the ground, looking down. So that's where we go to work on the pumps every year and every day. The guys get out and check the pumps, but they have to get down to that basement that's like 22 feet deep. That was what I saw on Woodland Road when the morning hurricane, or the tornado, when I woke, drove down there that morning. And that was completely, going down the hill, we spent hours just clearing the road, getting down towards the bottom of St. Hubert's. And then this is a picture of the water utility. Foreman DiBiase and Russell Boardman, they are doing a little job opening up some valves. And that's a regular maintenance type thing that we go around and do for that. And so then, I guess we'll go to some of the things we're working on for next year, for 2020. Our injuries are down every year. We've been working on that. We work with tools and equipment and machinery, so we're going to have injuries. What my job is, is to try to make them less catastrophic and as few as possible. But the business we're in, either someone hammering or backing over or lifting something, we're in a type of business where we're going to have injuries. And so what we try to do is just try to minimize that, and we talk about that every year because that has a big effect on our insurance fund and our days lost and rates that we pay. So we're always working on that. And I want you to know that that's going down every year. But the time come, we'll ever be injury-free for 365 days, that's my goal. That's my goal. But I also understand that injuries happen. We're working on our radio upgrade system. One of the things during a tornado that happened, and happens in every storm, it's been going on for a while. Sometimes we can't communicate with, well, we can't communicate with emergency services and all first responders on the same frequency. So the idea of this radio system upgrade, and you're probably going to hear about it from the fire chief and the police chief at some point, is we want to be able to, in a storm, myself, the police chief, the fire chief, and a few others, go to a channel where the three or four of us can communicate and not have all the radio traffic of all the police cars, the fire trucks, the public works truck, and then have like a little bit of a command so we know who's deploying where. That would also allow us to talk directly to the police department, myself, or the fire department, or my guys, on an upgraded radio system where I can kind of get an idea of what's happening at that location before we have to get there. So if I can talk to the police officer, he can call me during a storm and say, "Hey, the tree's across the road, you need to do it," rather than getting a phone call saying, you know, "Oh, you might have to go look at this." Then we know. I can start the resources, the heavy equipment going to that road. So the idea of that upgraded radio system is to help us better respond to the public. One of the things we're going to look at is examining the benefits of combining the water utility and sewer utility together. There is two utilities, three utilities, there's two. Water and electric in one building, and the sewer department, which is also a utility. So we've had some conversation recently about how we can make it more efficient, if we can do a better job with it. Can we bring more men into the organization? Can the water department, which has an employee with almost 40 years, an employee with over 30 years, and then the next employee probably has around five years or so in the department, is there something we can do to maybe help fill that gap? Because we do get emergencies. And emergencies happen and things happen. And so we pull from other divisions, but one of the things we're going to look at is, do we need to pull from other divisions if we just take one utility and move it into another utility? It's something we're going to talk about. And then we're going to also talk about merging the Department of Public Works, the road department, and the parks department into one division, and then have a division head. And the reason for that is because it changes and the responsibilities change. And sometimes I know I have to get certain things done here, it might take certain things done with longerers, with other crews, but I feel like if it's being managed under one sole manager, that it'll be more efficient. And we'll have some little efficiencies, and we'll have some guys that say, "Oh, I don't always know that I'm going up there, but if we're going to go up there, maybe we can stop and take care of that because we're on our way up there." But the two different managers in there may not always know what's going on in each other's division. So I'm hoping to have some consistency in that. And the recycling center project is coming along. It is very wet. That is one of the lowest areas in town. They were digging down here today and taking scoops of, you know, just almost buckets of water, and, because it was such a wet weekend, that's a very wet area. But they're working on it. It's a progress. You know, I met last week with some people from the environmental commission. We were talking about food waste recycling. We're talking about that. We're talking about styrofoam recycling. We're talking about a few other things. And that's going to go in conjunction with this center so that it'll be a little bit more user-friendly. We're talking about rolling out some programs and getting a little bit more environmentally friendly for Madison, if you, if you will. In the budget, I think it's pretty straightforward. We've, we know it's a kind of a tight budget year. I understand that because I know that the garbage and the recycling is very expensive. The bids came in very highly, and I understand that. I know a little bit about it, and we don't really control that. And so when Jim and I met and talked about the budget a little bit, we shelved a few things off into next year because that's, garbage and recycling is a big jump, and it took quite a bit out of the budget. So we understand we're going to do that. And so you'll see, this year, we're going to replace one of the smaller Mason Tumpus and the street sweeper. And the reason we're going to replace the street sweeper is it's almost 15 years old. It's well worn. We've put a lot into it. It should have been replaced at 12 years. Madison has an aggressive street sweeping program. Most of you don't know it, but you're laying in bed, and at 4:15 every morning, that street sweeper's out doing the entire downtown area. And we try to work on the borders a couple times a week, so when you come into Madison, you know you're in Madison. But in order to do that, because now our downtown by 5:00 a.m., most parking spots on Main Street are taken by 5:00 a.m. So that's why the street sweeper comes in so early. But that's almost five days a week. Today, it was about 30 degrees. He comes in. We use very little water, but we want to keep it clean. We believe that the business is the backbone of the municipality. It's important when people come, they shop, they do things in town. If you see a clean street, you're less likely to throw a piece of litter or a piece of gum on there when the garbage cans are emptied. All that type of stuff makes a difference. And I'm a big believer in that small type of stuff, that when we are street sweeping and keeping those things clean and tidy, the rest of the town has an appearance. And so it's been my mantra since I started here, that we do around the borders, we do the entire length of the highway coming in and out around the border. So when you come into Madison, especially on the weekends, and if you're looking at property or real estate, I want you to know that you're in a well-maintained town. And you may or may not notice it, but for me, it's a personal thing. I want you to come in and see that the curb line is clean, the town's maintained when you come in here. And I'm a believer that what we do directly results in property values. And I would like to also just thank the mayor real quick. He had me in the month of December come out to the Rotary and speak, and it went very well. And I'm still having a conversation with some of the Rotary members at that regarding some things that came on. It was very formative. And one of the things I found out in that speaking commitment was that some people, business people in town, too, didn't even know what the Department of Public Works does. And that we're like the hidden little gem, or, you know, we're like at the end of the train line, and they didn't realize all the, you know, different things we do. So Mayor, again, thank you very much for having us come out.
Glad you could do it. Yep. You're going to cover water utility cap, or...
Yep, okay. So I think the next one is the water utility capital. Bob Vogel's going to talk a little bit about the B well improvements. There's some new motors and some electrical work that is going to be done there. The redevelopment of the well, that is actually the casting, which is 180 feet deep, and it's a liner that has to be pulled out. There's a hole in the roof, and they're going to pull that out. It's one of the original ones, and it gets redone. And then the well gets cleaned, so to speak, it's underwashed. That comes out, all the plumes come out. They put a new one in, put together, but it's got to come out through a crane. It goes all the way back down to the bottom of the well. And it'll have a new motor put on the top of it. And that's what we call redevelopment of the well, is doing that. The tank inspections is the five-year, that's a every-five-year program. We look at the inside and the outside of the programs. We have a scuba guy who goes in and actually takes a little bit of a look inside the tanks. Tanks cannot be emptied out. They're going to be full because of water pressure. So with these companies that do, it's becoming more and more of a common thing to do. The mains and valves, we do regular work on the mains and valves. It's kind of when we do replacing streets, if you notice when we're paving some streets, we'll replace some of the valves, we'll look at them, and we'll inspect them and see, that's what that line is for. If we're, and then Green Village and the Garfield, M.G., and the Shady Lawn, the main The main on Shady Lawn is one of the last six-inch mains that we have in town. So if you can remember Gene's thing, which was six inches, that at one time was the industry standard. And so now we're upgrading to eight inches.
Thank you, Gene.
And, you know, as anyone will tell you, that in the fire service, the water mains really should be a minimum of eight inches for the flow of water. So that's one of the last remaining areas that has six, and we're going to be upgrading that to an eight inch, which will also give a little bit more pressure and volume to the residents that live on that street.
Any questions? Thank you. Very thorough. And also thank you for reminding me that I'm getting old because I was going to comment that we just bought the, a street sweeper, but I guess that was my first year. Any other councils or questions or Carmella?
Yeah. Of course I have comments, you know that. I'm just taking a look at your goals for 2020. I think one of the best things I'm seeing here is a combination of the water utilities and the sewer utility, combining those two departments. My concern is, and I guess Jim is sitting back there saying, oh God, what is she going to say now? I always have had a concern and, you know, I stated it in my, in my first remarks that I made, okay? You could light a candle, I'm sorry, electric, you could light a candle when the electric goes off, but what happens when we don't have good water? There are three men in that department that I know work very, very hard. I'm concerned about the water. We worry about the environment, but water is so important here. And I'm just wondering if you've given any thought to, and you would have my support certainly for another person in that department. I think what's going to happen is when we start putting in the water meters, which I feel are more important than the electric meters, because I really, I'm sorry. For now, because there's less of them. Oh my God.
Jimmy taking a beating.
There's less of them. You could clap for me for saying that, okay? So anyway, I just feel that the water meter change is extremely important. We don't have as many water meters. What is it about in comparison to, from 5,000 to like 6,500 of electric meters? I have often said that we need to get it done and we need to get it done all at once. Just bring somebody in, put in the new meters, get it done, and let's see what's going on. But those are the couple of suggestions that I will make during the budget process for your operating fund. But I like this thought of you doing, you know, some of these combined departments. I've always been a big proponent of inter-training and I think it's good for everybody to know somebody else's job. Everything else looks good. You know, your, you know, your budget is not bad for public works. I'm glad to hear and I think that Claire probably is happy to hear too, that you had some conversation about solar down at the DPW garage. I think it's probably one of the best places in Madison to do that. So I'm happy to hear that everybody is working so well together. That makes our job a lot easier because you all understand what's going on. So thank you too. Thank you to your guys. You know, thanks for always plowing so I could get to work and get away from you know who. So anyway. He's going to listen to this. So anyway, but you know what? It's an absolute pleasure. It's an absolute pleasure to have you guys as department heads. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. But you know, when we were listening to, and getting back to water, when we were listening to Gene talk about water and whatever, and he said, you know, there is, let me see, over a 10-year period, okay? One tree intercepts 12,622 gallons of water. So you see how interrelated all of this is, whether it's shade tree, water, the electric and whatever. But thanks for doing a good job, per usual. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Deb?
Just a real quick one, and it may be worth discussing with you at another point. With the recycling center project, styrofoam is a possibility as to be that we'll be adding it?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that's on the radar. It won't be right off the bat. Once we get the recycling center up and running with co-mingle and paper and a couple of other products, we're going to be trying to do that styrofoam is on the radar.
Oh, that's fantastic. And then the other question, I can't remember when we did the recycling center, are the hours going to increase when I, as Oshmo resident?
Yes.
Need to come down and bring my stuff?
We don't have those hours yet.
That's fine.
But they'll increase from what they currently are.
Okay.
Yes, Austria?
Thank you. And installing the new smart meter, electric meters, it's easier, I understand, than because they're outside of the home or the building. But installing the water meters and communication modules is more difficult.
Correct.
Because we have to get inside. Should, do we need an app to hire an outside company to come in and do this so we can get it done?
So yes, yes. And the reason is we have three people in the water department now. We're going to look at maybe increasing that, but you have to make appointments for people. And we try to make as many appointments as possible to be as flexible as possible. Sometimes when people call and say, you know, can I make an appointment, but I have to be on the train? I say, what time's your train leave? We'll try to work around that. Or, you know, I have to, my babysitter comes at a certain time and says, okay, we can work that out. We try to do that. But to do it in a large scale, right? So we're going to need Saturday hours. So we're going to be probably trying to work with some contractors that have very, very numerous years of experience doing this. And then they can have some Saturday hours, they can have some evening hours. They're not going to, you know, take the last appointment at 6 o'clock or 6:30, which I think the feedback I get from residents is that's really what people want. You know, it's very hard for me to tell someone, we're going to put a water meter in your house that is going to be more efficient, so you might be getting billed for more water. But we also need you to take a half a day off from work because that guy is going to come, you know, at 9:00 or 9:30 in the morning. And if there's a water main break, he may not be coming. And so we don't try to do that. So when we do a large-scale project like that, I would imagine we'll have a contractor come in and they'll make the appointments, you'll get a card in the mail, you'll get a thing in the bill, do a knocker, you'll call the 800 number, tell them, you know, the hours will be from 8:00 to 6:00 or something like that, Saturdays from 8:00 to 5:00, and they'll come and work it out. There's also a little bit involved in that in some of the houses that we go into on occasion. On occasion, people have stuff in their basements that block the water meters. And sometimes you might have to be moving a few items in boxes and crates to get to the water meter, and it's very time consuming. And so there's companies out there that understand that. And they may actually now ask them, the resident, okay, when you do, can you just take a picture five feet back from your meter? And then we'll have an idea if we can even access the meter or if it's in a closet or if there's two filing cabinets that were put in front of it or whatever, we'll get that kind of information. But that'll go to a third party and that'll be the most efficient way to do it.
Have you put that in your budget for this year?
We're working on that with the CFO and the water budget, yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you. And thank you for all your very creative, I'm sorry. More needed.
Oh, just, just one quick question. We do a really good job of planning out capital expenditures going out in a five-year period. Do we also, do we also do like a risk?
Assessment?
Yeah, thank you. A risk assessment so that we're also looking at possible problems coming down the line and putting stuff out? Do we look at that?
Yes. The part of my budgeting and part of my daily operations is always looking two or three years down the road. I'm not just looking at next week, but I'm also looking at like the water mains, right? What do we need to replace in the water mains? Where do we need to upgrade? Where are we having some problems? Down the road, some of the trucks that were bought in 2001, is there one that we can continue to keep a little bit longer, but then we need to replace another one because it was bought in 2001? But we're always looking two or three years down the road. That's how we get to that budget thing and try to do it. And that's why when I work with Jim, we can shuffle things off. We have an understanding where things are going. And if we need to for a year, we do.
Okay.
Thank you. It was good also, thank you, this was brought up at a previous meeting, but your creative solutions to help the environment and keep costs down with the, for years, we've been filling the rink with water from hydrants as opposed to this year using rainwater. So thank you. Keep, keep, keep those creative solutions coming.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir. I'm going to put a timer on myself because I told the mayor I'd try to keep this.
I was just about to start my timer because you.
Three minutes, no. I promise I'll, I'll do just that. Okay. We're going to transition over to the electric utility financial report. From a transparency standpoint, as Councilman Vitale said, we have a lot of information online. Anyone interested in learning more about it is encouraged to go to the annual budget process. You've heard this story before, I was cleaning out the basement and found this annual report from 1944. My dad doesn't throw anything away. And in it, it was really neat, it doesn't show it, oh, there we go. It shows how much electric utility surplus was being transferred into the municipal budget in 1944 and how much was coming in property tax revenues. 1944, after World War II, a lot of delinquent taxes were being collected. So we transferred $127,000 from the electric utility and we only had property taxes that year of $4,000. The mayor that year decided, let's put an annual report out and show what great job we're doing here. That's a real interesting document that I have. Residential rate comparison, this was given to council and presented back earlier over the summer. This shows that Madison has had the largest rate drop of electric rates in, from the 2016, 2019 timeframe. The rate of 154, 55 for kind of the average consumption of 855 kilowatt hours is in line with many of, almost all of the investor-owned utilities. We're still a little bit above JCP and L, but our service and quality is so excellent that I think we're okay with being a little bit higher than JCP and L. A portfolio of block contracts. We did purchase some contracts in September and in May of this year, and we still have open slots in 2023, 2024. We did purchase some long-term contracts from January 1, 2025 through 2029. Administration's utility goals and objectives are security and system hardening. Staff's been working on hardening and reliability and security enhancements. And we worked on an interconnection with the neighboring towns with our water providers. Automated meters, Carmella touched on it and Jim Atina touched on it. We have over 2,500 AMI meters, electric meters installed and 500 water modules installed. And we have 2,000 meters in stock ready to be installed. So we're working hard on installing those as well. Just on Friday, I met with Jim, with Russ Brown, with Lou DeRosa about getting the gatekeeper automated collectors installed throughout town. So Jim Trimble, with having, he now has 10 books that are completely filled with automated meters. He won't even have to go out that day. The report in the morning will be on Donna's computer and Donna will be, Donna Magdalena will be ready to bill. That means that that's over one third, that's about one-third of the town. We have 28 books, 10 will be read automatically. That just means that Jim Trimble doesn't need to be out reading those books, which means he's going to be out installing more meters. So his rate of installation is going to increase because his read, the amount of time he needs to read is going to decrease. So we're holding him and pushing him to install as many meters as he can this year in 2020. We'll talk about the water module installation when we get to the water utility. The dividend and rebate, I'll have Councilman Early talk about this in a minute, but from a financial standpoint, you'll see that council can continue with a $2 million dividend and the $20 targeted rebate for eligible, income-eligible residents. And if you want to talk about that for a second now?
Sure. The, the electric utility rebate program is really an exemplary program that, you know, is one of the things that makes Madison special. It was first suggested and established by a friend of the borough and the council, Ben Wolkowitz. This is a program that makes a $200 rebate available to income-eligible residents as a credit on their electricity bill. In 2019, 352 income-eligible residents were approved for this rebate. It's a rebate of $200. And if you multiply that by, say, 300 to 350 applicants, it's a cost of about $65,000 to $70,000. I think that's money well spent to ensure the security and comfort of our most vulnerable residents. And it's a way that we can use some of our utility surplus to help make sure that everyone is comfortable and safe in their homes and is able to afford their energy costs, which as we learned last week from a great presentation on sustainability in Madison, as for residents who have lower incomes, the percentage of their income that they pay towards energy costs is a much greater percentage of their household budget. So I think we should reauthorize or authorize the continuation of the targeted electric utility rate rebate program. And I think it's something that going into our fifth year has been a proven benefit to our town.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to restart my clock.
You're not allowed to yield time.
I'm only at four minutes. I'm doing good. So I throw a lot of numbers out and for full transparency purposes, to be honest with you, I want to show multiple years of the actual performance of the electric utility in terms of how much money it's collected, what the impact of the electric utility dividend and other information, the cost of the block contracts and the surplus that's generated. And so we toss a lot of numbers out here, but to make things a little easier, I'm just going to use a little highlighter and show that the electric utility dividend was really spot on. I know this was reported to council, but I wanted to report it to the public that in 2018, council asked for a $1.5 million dividend, came in at 1.5, 1,545. In 2019, council asked for a dividend rate that was 2 million and it came in actually at 1,990,000, just $10,000 off. This evening, there's Resolution 70, which is on the consent agenda. And Austria asked me, Councilman Bebely asked me to talk just for a second about this. And I'll let it count towards my time, if that's okay. But there are one, two, three, there are five rate codes that we have in electricity. Residential, typical and easy to understand. The rest are business codes and it depends on the size. General service with demand is one of the largest ones. That's all the retail stores downtown. It is, they have a lower per kilowatt hour cost that they pay, but they also pay what's called the demand charge. The meter actually looks and says, what's the highest amount of electricity that this business drew in any 15-minute period? And it charges a pretty significant amount based on that. What are we trying to do? We're trying to not have them have huge spikes in their draw because that's an impact on our system and some costs. There's another service called general service with non-demand, that's for really small businesses. There's general service mid-level, and this is on Resolution 70, it's not on the presentation. General service mid-level is for the large corporations, but not the largest. So it's for, it's for the Quest Diagnostics Building and the Pfizer Building and some of those large consumers at Geraldo Farms. And then the general service, the large general service is for Drew University and primarily for two accounts that really draw a lot. Drew University and Allergan. Drew University has billing of well over $1 million a year. And as you can see, our cash collections are $2.2 million. So Drew University represents 5% of our revenue. So they have a slightly different rate code. In terms of the total surplus generated, this is a big number that we've always wanted to look at, especially since strategic planning. We thought we were going to generate about 6.3 million in our original estimate, but we generated 6.7 million. And that's good and that's significant because we utilized 6.6 million dollars in the municipal budget. So the amount of surplus that we started out at the beginning of the year, my bathtub analogy, it drops down, it filled back up almost exactly to where it was, which I think is, is good and appropriate. So we'll talk more about that when we talk about the full budget in terms of thinking forward, in terms of what the dividend is. Put a question mark here, but I think we can certainly support a $2 million dividend for another year. The cost of the block contract has fallen significantly from 2016 to 2019, but it's going to start to level off now. And transmission and capacity costs are going to increase significantly. I've got a definition of that coming up, the transmission and capacity costs, because the electricity is the actual electrons, what actually makes light happen. Capacity and transmission costs are costs that we receive from PJM. So I wanted to just put in here what the three entities are that have jurisdiction over in the New Jersey electric markets. Don't want to talk too much about it, but I can say that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is a commission that's run by the federal government. And so it has one viewpoint of how things should work. The Board of Public Utility is a state agency where Governor Murphy advances a lot of the agenda through his appointments and through what he wishes to happen on the regulatory and policy standpoint. They're a little bit at odds right now. I think it could be because of a Republican presidential administration and a Democratic state administration. So they're having some discussions and some issues. And we'll talk about that in a minute. PJM, the definition is there, we'll just call it the grid. They're an entity that took over from the investor-owned utilities to manage the grid, the generators, the load-serving entities or distribution companies and the transmission companies. We are a member of PJM. There's over 1,000. We actually are a member, a voting member of PJM. There are two entities that support the Madison Electric Utility, the Public Power Association New Jersey, which is lobbying 501(c)(3), of which we are a member, and the New Jersey Public Power Authority, which is authority, state-recognized authority and has the ability to do things that a 501(c)(3) can't. There is a tremendous uncertainty in the transmission and capacity markets. I sent kind of a very detailed email a few days ago, which just talks about it. And I think we're going to be talking a lot about this over the coming years. The desire of the Murphy administration and the state of New Jersey to advance laudable renewable energy goals is going to have an impact on transmission and capacity costs. And there is some back and forth between PJM, FERC and the BPU on how some of this, how some of this happens. For example, I talk about FERC regulating the ROE for transmission developers. The transmission companies actually go to PJM and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and say, we want to put a transmission line here, a power line here. How much is their return on equity going to be? Should they only get 8%? In which case our costs are less? Or should they get 10 or 12% of return on their equity? In which case our costs are more? Those are the type of things that are getting resolved and are being discussed significantly. This is something we used to talk quite a bit about, and I just wanted to put a slide up that we have a 2.3 million dollar cost for capacity. And this calculation shows how it works. The main thing to keep in mind is that this calculation includes a cost from PJM, which here in this example... example is $158. Shouldn't be a dollar sign there. 365 days, and then our peak capacity and our peak, our peak consumption. And that peak load is measured on the five non-coincident hottest days of, most highest-consuming days of the year. So when we talk about, and we've talked about this in the past, about possibly Madison getting battery storage or Madison getting a generation unit that can be a peaking generation unit, it's there to reduce that number, which in turn can reduce this number significantly. And no savings can actually pay for the, pay for the, pay for those investments. I'm not going to make 10 minutes, Mayor. I apologize.
No, you blew right past it.
I blew right past it.
Those extra slides killed you.
I know, I know. So the water utility, cool picture from 1944, the old water tanks on Midwood. And this is the five-year capital plan that Ken discussed. I just want to point out the significant increase in capital investment that this council has advanced since 2016. We were only investing 100, $200, $250,000 in 2013, 14, and 15. It bumped up to 600,000, and now we're at a million or more the last four years. We're going to, we want to continue to do that. We, you see other towns that are struggling, that are having water main breaks in their downtowns like Hoboken. And so administration is advocating, and council has been very wonderful in supporting a very strong capital program with the water utility. Throwing more numbers at you, this is the, the water utility performance. It performed well. We've been able to manage and reduce certain expenses in operations here, and we're going to be able to continue, ask council to continue, $900,000 going into the capital improvement fund. That's where we fund that 900,000 to 1.1 million dollars worth of projects that Bob Vogel and Ken O'Brien and Tom DeBias advanced. The surplus at the beginning of the year was, the surplus at the beginning of the year was declining in 2018. We were concerned that, that we were going to be in a situation where it was not going to be sustainable. Here's surplus at the beginning of 2017. At the end of 2017, it dropped significantly. But through some creative and smart changes in the operational costs, we've been able to, to actually have a surplus stabilize, and then this year it actually increased. That just is an indication of the good operations and good expenditures and the strength of the utility. Having said that, I, I think that there, I, I agree with Councilwoman Vitale about wanting to bring more staff onto the water utility, but there are a certain number of costs and other factors that we need to take into account. So I did include a water utility rate comparison, similar to the electric utility, where I picked kind of a, a number. I looked at my consumption before my kids moved out, and we were consuming about 2,000 cubic feet of water quarterly. Talking to Deb, I think they do a better job. We probably taking longer showers in our house. But this is the, this is the annual bill here. So a resident in Madison is paying $248 annually if they consume that, if they consume 2,000 cubic feet quarterly. There's about 7.5 gallons in a cubic foot. So 2,000 cubic feet is 14,000 gallons, which is 166 gallons per day. American Water, which services Chatham Township Summit, Burnsville, is there. Suez for Bergen and Hudson. Aqua is investor-owned utility in Sussex and Warren and Hunterton. Southeast Morris County Municipal Utility Authority. Bob Vogel's water bill is, and Bob Duffy's, if he's consuming as much as we are, is $387. Denville, Chatham, and Florence Park all have their own municipal water utilities. Just want to show where Madison is in that regard. So as a cautious, financially conservative chief financial officer, I could make a cogent argument that we should consider a water rate increase. I'm not asking for any, any, any of that now, but throughout this budget process, we may want to talk about it, especially if we're talking about funding, continuing to fund the capital and talking about funding additional staff in that utility.
Okay. Couple of just quick comments. One to, you know, reinforce some of the things you just said, especially with capital reinvestment. There are towns out there that have been forced to sell off a sewer utility or, and/or a water utility just because they never, they weren't investing, and then when the bill came due, there was no way they could afford that. So they sell it off, and then all of a sudden, rates go way up, and they've lost control and lost a, a utility. The concept, you know, it's time for us to look at our water rates for twofold. One is making sure, as Carmella keeps on saying, that we protect that very valuable commodity. We also want to encourage and that this is a resource that doesn't just keep flowing, that to have cheap water doesn't take care of our utility and doesn't encourage conservation. We can all take those shorter showers. As you can notice, my hair gets more, is, today it's looking, now it's looking better, but I'm showing more with the hair mess because I take that shorter shower. Anyway.
Your hair's way better than mine, Mayor.
It's getting late, I guess. Sorry. I digress.
Very late.
Any other, Deb?
Just real quick. First of all, thank you for making my head continually spin with number after number. And just to give people an idea, since you brought it up, I was met with Jim on Friday about this, and we looked, I said, I have no idea. I'm a family of five. I have three teenage boys, one of whom likes his 30-minute shower, and my yearly bill for 2019, I think we discovered, was 154 and change. So I don't know what's different between my house and his house.
You might have an old water meter.
Get that new meter.
You know, but I do, I do appreciate the work that goes into this, and, and while it makes my head spin, it does help understand, and I agree with Carmella, we need to look at the water, the water budget and getting that, because I know even things like, I'm in a duplex, and our water meter is actually on, in the basement of the people that live on the other side of the wall. So when we had a water meter problem, it was coordinating. I got the call, but it was our problem, so we had to call. So it's, you know, I think anything we can do to automate it and also help people to regulate, you know, because maybe they'll save even more money or whatever. But I do appreciate this because this is a ton of work.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I would just want to add, to support what Carmella was saying, we met in December with a company that can come in and replace the water meters in a programmatic way. They have a computer system. You will get text messages and emails that says, we want to schedule you. You're on Albright Circle. Here's Tuesday at 1:00, Thursday at 4:00, Saturday at 11:00 a.m. And it's all, that system is made, so they're not going to go to Albright Circle, then to Laurel Way, then to Lathrop, then they're not bouncing all over town. They're going to give people who call in, who are from Albright Circle, certain, certain times so they can be as efficient as possible. These companies make money by changing out the water meters efficiently and quickly, and by installing the water modules. So I will work with the water utility and with Ken O'Brien and with Administrator Cody, and the goal is to have a pilot program of 300 homes changed, hopefully by the third quarter of this year, and then what we learn from that, we'll put into an RFP, and we'll have a company come out and do what you said, Carmella, and just do them all.
Yeah. And the other advantage, as Ken pointed out, is, okay, you scheduled a half-day water meter replacements. All of a sudden, there's a water main break somewhere in town. So if we're doing in-house, everyone is pulled off, and those get canceled and have to get rescheduled. But if you have an outside contractor, they've got one job to do. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to say that, I don't know if most people know this, but Jim is an absolute pleasure to work with. This is, this is a tremendous amount of work. I, I hope people kind of look at it on Rosnet because it'll be up there probably tomorrow. Right, Michael? And so, but there's a lot of information in here, and I, I just think that you've, you've done a phenomenal job with it. It's a little hard to understand all of it, but little by little, Jim finds a way to make us understand which direction we should really be going. I, I agree. I'd like to see if we can have the conversation maybe in a couple of months when, you know, we're all kind of settled in. It's only January, and, you know, about an increase. I sat on this council when we did the first increase. I think Austria was there too, right? 25% we did. And that was a nightmare. That was a nightmare to deal with. I don't want that to happen again, you know. So small increments might be a good thought. I think that it's also important so that we could put money, more money into surplus. This is an aging, I don't think people understand how old the systems are in this town. We were talking about it at the joint meeting the other night. The sewer treatment plant is, goes back to 1910, and so does a lot of this water. So, you know, I think it's something that we need to talk about in another month or so.
All right. Very much. Our next thing is electric utility rebate. Rachel?
So I borrowed a few minutes of Jim's time to make my pitch to recommend the continued, to authorize a continued electric utility rebate. So since the hour is late, I'll trust that you all remember what I said, and, and I think we can leave it at that.
All right. Any other, any questions or comments? Okay, that's Resolution 57. Plastic bags. Let me see if I can cover this quickly. So as you know, in the fall, coordinated with our neighboring towns, we passed a single-use bag ordinance, and went out there. We've got some feedback, and a lot of it is, this is very important, and we need to implement it. And just a couple of things we're working on, and we anticipate introducing a new ordinance at the next meeting. As pointed out, it's, we, we have to introduce a new one, but we're still on schedule for the March implementation. But a couple of things that are being contemplated right now, it's required that a store has to have paper bags, and they have to charge 10 cents. We had feedback that some stores just want to encourage reusable bags, and paper will take up storage space. And so it will not be mandatory that they carry paper bags. There's a, there's concerns about the mom-and-pop stores, that the people that have been in this town for so long, charging 10 cents, you know, they don't, they're not using a whole lot of paper bags. And so we're contemplating an exemption for stores that have less than 10 employees, that they would not have to be charging the 10 cents. And the other is to give some leeway for administrative exempt, temporary exemptions. For example, it was brought up that some of the stores in town buy a large supply of plastic bags and would have a supply that takes them way past March, even though this was implemented back in the fall. And as I've been saying, the only thing worse than a single-use plastic bag is a zero-use plastic bag. So rather than telling them, you have to throw it away, we would allow them to apply for exemption. A large store, a multi-store operation such as a Stop Shop in Walgreens, we would probably not have the sympathy for that because they can transfer their stock somewhere else where they can burn it down while, until a statewide ban is in place. And we're also hoping that statewide ban won't take two years to be not only passed, but to be implemented. So we'll be pushing that. So those are the things we're working on. Any other questions or comments on the, Deb?
Just a quick comment.
You want a blanket?
Yeah.
Jim's presentation was...
We said, if you want to talk about it, this is what you talk about.
You want a heater?
It is cold up here.
Yep. Yeah.
I'm exhausted.
We found Louie. We found Lou.
And I haven't taken my medicine yet, which means I'm not going to be, yeah. I meant to bring it with me.
You guys have had meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. If we can find our seats, please.
I worked everybody into the presentation. What you talking about? Just tell them to go ahead and introduce it.
Full service.
All right. Let the record reflect, we have reconvened at 10:43 with all members present. Now we go to ordinance for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on January 13, 2020. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinances for second reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title. Ordinance 1-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $1,610,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2020 Rotary Construction Projects, Related Work, and Miscellaneous Projects.
I open the hearing. Anyone wish to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 1-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 1-2020 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish
notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 2-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $1,650,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for 2020 milling and overlay projects.
I now open the hearing for ordinance two. Anyone wish to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 2-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 2-2020 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance with accordance, a ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to our second invitation for discussion. This is when you may comment on any topic, but again, the same rules apply. State your name, your address. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I will shut you down at four minutes.
Well, Mr. Solaki's going up there. Could I just say one thing? There were several people who did not realize that they should have made comments about the tree ordinance at the first session. So I suggested that they reach out to Maureen and Jean to give their comments to you between now and the next meeting.
But, yeah, and plus, we have the hearing, and it's two meetings in between, so they're welcome to come back. Yep. Thank you.
I should have been signing in while I was waiting. Sorry. I'm Solaki, 1 Fairwood Road. I'll keep it to 30 seconds since it's really late. I just was, you know, I'm here in support of the shade tree ordinance. And I just wanted to respond a bit to the questions that came back from council about, you know, fees and language. And I don't want anyone on council to think that we have not spent hours and hours and days reviewing internally, comparing to all the, you know, the donut around the hole that we are. We've looked at all of those. So a lot of, these numbers aren't just things we picked just because we thought it was a nice number or it worked out. It was comparing to other municipalities that have this, and then it works. And then, of course, in terms of the language, there's a lot of legal reviews. So we all would have liked it to sound a lot easier to understand. But to Ms. Erlich's point, you know, I'm a landscape architect, so I'm used to reading these things. So I read it, and I say, oh, okay, got it. That's the rules you got to follow. But I understand it's not easy for residents. But I don't want anyone on council to think that we have not spent a lot of time on this, to get it just right. So there's, it's never going to be perfect. It's never going to be a perfect ordinance for everybody, but it's a step in the right direction. So that's it.
Thank you. And very good points. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Will the clerk please read the statement related to introduction of ordinances?
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for February 24, 2020. It will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 3-2020 for first reading. Ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the governing body of the Borough of Madison, amending the code of the Borough of Madison to add a new chapter 178 entitled Tree Protection.
Mayor, I move ordinance 3-2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, ordinance four has been pulled for now and will be, will return at the next meeting. Consent agenda resolution. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolution 56-2020 to Resolution 70-2020.
Second.
Any, be pulled or any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey? Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Thankfully, there's no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers, will the clerk please read the voucher registry?
Current fund, $4,78,699.16. General capital fund, $6,053.40. Electric operating fund, $722,215.20. Electric capital fund, $10,708.88. Water operating fund, $54,876.85. Water capital fund, $0.00. The total is $4,882,787.87.
Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
And there is no new business. With that.
On that note, Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you all for staying.
Yeah, we're not used to those long ones anymore.
But I kept it, we didn't have to make a motion.
Squeaked in.